Welcome to the October 18th, 2018 Sherburne Select Board meeting. I'd ask the town administrator to read the agenda with any proposed changes.
First, we'll have a period of public comment, and I don't believe that anyone's signed up for that. And then consideration of consent agenda with a payroll warrant, setting the next meeting of November 1st. And then there are two one-day liquor licenses, one for Dover Sherburne Education Fund and the other for Friends of the Sherburne Library. Then consideration of financial matters with an update on custody of library trust funds with Heidi Doyle, the town treasurer. Then consideration of final approval of the open space and recreation plan. Consideration vote on letter of support. Marian Nutra from Open Space Committee is here. And 2018 special town meeting was set for December 11th and possible updates. Then under routine business, as town administrator report selectmen reports. And then adjourn to executive session to return to open session immediately following. The executive session, consideration of procurement action regarding library expansion project, design techniques, OPM contract, and five-star performance bond. The citation for that is MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21, 3, to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town and the chair so declares with the library.
Can I take just one second to ask Diane something?
Can we amend the agenda and after the executive session, add in consideration of procurement action regarding library expansion project, design techniques, OPM contract, and five-star performance bond again?
What? Once we're back in open session?
You're returning, it says adjourn to executive session to return to open session immediately, but it doesn't say what you're returning to do.
That's what those items are on that box after executive session.
Yeah, I thought that's what we were doing.
It's already in there.
Yeah, it's... That's under the executive session. But Tom, town council had told me make sure that there was a citation in the open session for the same.
Yes, the executive session is the bottom paragraph. And I think I read, and I think most people read, that these three items were open session items when you returned from... Just a question, the order is...
That's all executive session?
Bottom's executive session.
I think those should be, these two things should be switched around.
Yeah.
We're off to a good start.
See, with the citation up first.
So let's approve the agenda with the last two items reversed. How's that?
Education. Yes, right, right. The citation in the executive session is for library, and that will cover that. And then the open session citation would be the consideration of procurement action regarding library expansion.
So the amendment would be to move the consideration of procurement with the two bullet points after, we're going to add open, return to open session, and we'll move that language to the open session?
Yes, after the executive session.
Great. Any amendments up here?
I'm just wondering why we don't take this, which is the subject of the executive session, and just move it up to there.
Yeah, that is exactly what we're going to do, is move it to right there.
Yeah?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
So the executive session will, the next language will be the citation to Mass General Law's Chapter 30A. The agenda will now read, return to open session, consideration of procurement action, RE, library expansion project, design techniques, five-star performance bond. Any other amendments to the...
We'll move to accept the agenda as amended.
Second?
Okay, all in favor of the agenda as amended? Terrific. The consent, first item on the agenda is a consent agenda for the payroll warrant. The next meeting is scheduled for November 1st, and we have two one-day liquor licenses, one for the Dover Sherburne Education Fund and one for the Friends of the Sherburne Library.
So can I divide that up and take the next meeting date off the consent agenda?
Second.
Because I have a conflict with that date.
So do I.
See if I can... And otherwise move approval of the payroll warrant, the one-day liquor license and the one-day liquor license.
Second.
All in favor of approval of the consent agenda as amended?
All right, great.
Terrific. Do you want to talk now about scheduling the next meeting? I've got a conflict on November the 8th, unfortunately. Is that week?
I have some hearings that are underway, and the next, one of the hearing dates is going to be November 1st for me, so I want to see if we can adjust that to some other date.
The 31st is Halloween.
What about the 30th?
What about the 30th? How does that work for everyone?
I cannot make the 30th. I have a city council meeting.
Tuesday nights are not good for me with scheduling.
How about the 29th, the Monday?
I would, I mean, I don't know, if we have a quorum, I would suggest, we had talked about trying to keep these on a regular schedule. I know two people have a conflict, but I think if we start trying to move everything around, it's...
Fine.
Because I can't, I mean, I have a hard, I have to schedule stuff a month in advance at this point with my kid's schedules and my wife's schedule, and it's hard to move things.
Yeah, my concern is just with one member missing is one thing, a couple peoples, you know, it's 40 percent of the board. What about Friday, November the 2nd?
Friday with me.
Start off the weekend. Somebody can bring the beer.
That's how old-school meetings are done.
What's that?
That's how old-school meetings are done in colonial days.
Really?
Colonial days.
Wow. So does Friday the 2nd work for everyone?
I can make Friday the 2nd.
Yeah, I can, I think I can make Fridays work, or Friday work.
You do it in the morning?
I can't do it in the morning. We could make it before 7:00, certainly. I don't know if that makes it easier on anyone, but it's up to you.
Yeah, what about starting a little earlier on Friday, 6:00? Start the weekend?
I probably won't be here, so it don't matter to me.
Oh, you won't be here on the 2nd, no matter what?
Probably not. It's fine, it's fine, Jeff.
What's the following week look like?
We got a five-person board.
What's the best date of that week for Eric, for you and George?
For which, which week?
The week of November 1st and 2nd. October 29th.
Either keeping it the 1st or the 2nd. I can't do any other day that week.
Instead of the 1st and 3rd weeks in November, could you do the 2nd and 4th or 5th week?
We can't, I've got a fundraiser that I'm actively involved with on the 8th, so that's, but that's fine. If it's only one member, that's, that isn't losing two people.
I would say that Friday the 2nd. If Paul can do that, the only person missing would be Mike, so...
Okay, let's reschedule it to the Friday, November 2nd at 7:00 PM.
Bad precedent.
What's that?
Friday meetings are a bad precedent, but that's fine.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not happy about meeting on Friday either.
Oh, I thought, are you saying 7:00 AM or 7:00 PM?
6:00 PM.
PM. Okay.
What, 6:00, is that what you said? You said 6:00? I'm just entering it now.
What's that?
You said 6:00?
6:00 on Friday.
Yeah, if Mike's not going to be here, how about starting at 6:00? Does that work for...
Fine with me, the sooner the better. On Friday.
Let's move it to 6:00 then.
On the 2nd.
6:00 PM, November the 2nd.
If we did 5:00, would you be able to make it, Mike?
No, probably not.
Okay.
How far are you scheduled, but I wanted to point out, we have the advisory public hearing number 14 also.
Right.
Your next meeting, I'm assuming that'll be a select meeting also, public hearing.
That's a Wednesday.
Assuming it's a Wednesday night.
Yeah.
Thank you for pointing that out, Paul.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, so the consent agenda is for the payroll warrant and the two one-day liquor licenses. Do I have a motion to approve?
We just did that.
We already approved that.
I didn't think we voted on it.
Yeah, we did vote on the consent agenda minus the meeting.
Right, sorry.
This consent agenda is very efficient. This is good. Good way to do things.
Not if you vote on it three times.
Okay, the second item is the update on the custody of library trust funds. Last week, we met with town council to discuss the issue. We reached an initial agreement, which was approved by the library trustees at their Tuesday night meeting. We're going to enter into a memorandum of understanding that where funds have, for which, there have not been written instructions, that the board of trustees of the library have physical custody of those funds. Those are going to be under the custody of the town treasurer. We've gone through a couple of drafts of the memorandum of understanding. It's close, but it's not final yet.
Do you have that to share, or...
Yeah. Happy to. Yeah, there are some revisions. The redlining, the underlining is new language from the library trustees. Town council has not reviewed that. That just came in about, came in earlier today. Town council has it and is reviewing it, so there may be some, some final tweaks. The trustees' meeting approved the essential terms of the memorandum of understanding. Going forward, the library trustees' plan is to request the donations to be made specifically to the library trustees with a statement that, absent the donors' disagreement, the custody would be in the control of the library treasurer.
What is physical custody? And they're actually hanging on to a pile of money, right? So why is this physical custody?
Yeah, thanks, Heidi. It's language from the statute.
Yes, you asked about physical custody.
Yeah, right.
It really is, it has signing access onto the money and the ability to direct the bank to move it. However, in the sense of libraries, they're protected where a town treasurer cannot move any money unless it's directed by the library trustees. So libraries will control it, manage it. They can say where they want it invested, what they want to do, but they actually do not have signing access to those funds. So because you want to have a bonded person, you want to have these different criterias for town treasurer, that is held to a certain standard. But if they have, that's part of the difference. So physical custody is just who's going to have the signing access onto it, but I have no actual control of the money to say where it goes or how it should be spent. It's all at their discretion.
I was just questioning the word physical. Is that a term of art? That's a legal term?
Yeah, that's a term that's in the statutes that they talk about, so I think that's why Sherin was mentioning having that in.
Yeah, it's the specific language in Mass General Law, Chapter 78, Section 10 and 11.
So are you looking for a vote to...
No, I want to present a final MOU, so I would propose to do that at our next meeting.
So by way of questions, since I always have questions. I'm sorry.
It's for anyone else.
The library trustees have agreed to this?
Yes, at their meeting on Tuesday.
And the team that we had working with them agree to it, and you agree to it?
I, I have some revisions, and that's what I want to work with legal counsel on, a couple of the revisions, and then have the library revisit some of the terms. The majority of the agreement is in place.
So we're, we're moving towards having a consensus product that everybody can sign on to, and there'll be no more disagreements thereafter?
That, well, hopefully, and that's the goal, and that they're comfortable realizing their money is their money to manage and control, you know, that this is not anything that they lose any access to it, they do not lose any way of controlling it. But there's a concern that liability of what I'm responsible because they're using the town's tax ID, that was the issue of, the law states the town treasurer's responsible for anything using a town tax ID. And it became of, funds were donated to Sherburne Library or Sherburne trustees, and they actually, the law was saying that they kind of are two different areas.
And you had mentioned several times that you were bonded and others were not bonded. Is there any steps being taken to bond everybody involved with the handling of this money?
Yes.
Steps are being taken.
Right, to bond the...
The library treasurer.
Library treasurer.
Excellent. So it sounds like good progress.
Yeah, there's some additional wordsmithing to be done. Eric was at the library trustees' meeting. Eric, want to add anything to what, or clarify anything that I said?
No, I think he summarized it quite well. People were in agreement there. They did authorize one of the members to make some adjustments, and it sounds like they're just kind of making those final tweaks right now, to add some language in there, and I think we're seeing a result of that. I think, I think there's no reason not to expect that we wouldn't see by the next meeting a finalized document that everyone can at least be happy with, or at least not happy with.
Is everybody in agreement on these funds? I mean, that was the important part, working out what money went where.
Yeah, some of the funds they're getting, again, with town council's input, they're getting statements from some of the larger endowments.
And some funds even had some specifics. Some funds even already, which they believe is essentially under the library's physical custody or what have you, because they, they had language in them either.
I just meant, I just meant, had people come to consensus on these.
There's one call I was on, there was not any consensus. They're waiting for donors' instructions on a couple of them. One of the funds is a very small endowment of, I think, $4,000. I think they're planning to spend it for the original stated intent, but that was the purpose of the meeting last Tuesday, and there are some funds that will be in town treasurer's custody no matter what, because there are older, older funds that were donated to the town. There are several that we've already agreed will be in the treasurer's, the library treasurer's custody.
And when the town appropriates money for the library, where does that go? That's not in any of these funds, so how's that managed?
It actually mentions, I think, in the agreement, that if the town's appropriating funds for the library, it is with the town treasurer.
Right. That's paragraph 5.
Yeah, that's why I just wanted to get that out in the...
Yeah. No, that, the operational funds are not part of, these are endowment funds.
Right, right, yep.
And library trusts are a little bit different. They can tell me what bank to put it in versus cemetery trust conservation, then a town treasurer makes a decision where trusts go and the investments. I have no say in that with the library trust. They will have complete control of their accounts.
Well, they've done pretty well of them so far.
Certainly have, and have raised a lot of money. This memorandum of understanding is consistent with the two relevance, the relevant state statute and the Melrose decision, and that's been the goal.
And town council's happy with this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just haven't seen the red lines yet.
Right. The final language, that's why I'd rather wait until next meeting to have a final language with all of the funds agreed upon and populated in the appendices. Terrific, thanks, Heidi. Okay, Marian, the next item on the agenda is the final approval of the open space and recreation plan and a request for a vote, a letter of support from the select board.
Okay, I was hoping that you have had time to look through the open space and recreation plan, find typos, mistakes, omissions, corrections of fact. I haven't heard back, I haven't gotten any feedback, so I'm assuming that you didn't find anything wrong with it, and if so, I'd like to request a letter of support so that when I resubmit it to the state, it will have the required letter attached. And I think you've been giving a draft letter that was drafted by Diane and tweaked a bit by me, so, and you may have revised that letter further, but for, for the purposes of submission to the state, the letter looked fine to me. So it's really up to you to decide whether you want to approve and whether you can sign the letter at this point.
So I have no approval.
Second. Before we vote on it, I had a question for you, Marian. I, this is, I think, the third time I've read this. I read it fairly quickly. You said that you, you may have been joking, but our last meeting, you said you planted a couple of errors in here.
I didn't plan, I made a couple of errors.
Oh, okay, and have those been corrected?
Yes, they have.
I saw some redlining.
Yes.
Some minor grammatical changes, but...
Oh, yes, those were changes that should have been accepted in tract changes by the editor, and he didn't get it done, but, yeah.
It was a test for you to see if we were paying attention.
Exactly, exactly.
That's why I'm asking.
There were, there were others in addition to that.
So any questions up here about the open space and rec plan?
Yes, we've seen this several times, she's explained it to us several times. The letter is a good, wholehearted endorsement of the plan. It needs to be approved. We need to have a plan. We're supposed to have a plan every five years or so. We're overdue, we're on time for getting this plan approved. It's something we need to do. The work's been done. There's no reason to delay it further.
I would, there's one minor typo in the letter. It's, is, it's not, it is, it's, I would simply delete the apostrophe, second line in the second paragraph.
I can, I can, I can get it up on my computer because I knew that.
So all in favor of this vote of support? Any other discussion up here? I'm assuming not.
Just on the letter. It says selectman, I don't suppose it's like a select board member, under the signatories.
Oh, you can be whatever you want.
All right.
Whatever your preference is. Select board.
Select board.
Not a select board? Or would you be a selectman, a member of the select board?
I honestly don't know.
Yeah, you can be a selectman.
You're a select board member for me.
You can absolutely be a selectman.
Okay.
But you can also be a select board member if you...
That's what we were, we thought, I always talked about.
I'm going to do it right now, okay? Now I'll be back.
You went through this at town meeting, I don't know why people don't remember.
It's fine, as it is.
Terrific, all in favor? Unanimous support, thank you, Marian.
Okay, thank you.
Select person can be one.
Let's wait for the...
I'll take, I'll take selectman, it's fine. Take what? I'll take selectman, it's fine.
I would say our letterhead is a little discombobulated here.
What's the question about the letterhead?
Well, just, at least on this version of it.
Alignment.
It printed better than it...
Terrific. The next item on the agenda is a reminder that the special town meeting is scheduled for December 11th. David, was there anything other than that listing as a reminder?
No, just other than, the warrant is going to open October 25th and close the 31st. The Recreation Commission sent a request for an article, so you'll have to review that as part of the warrant process.
What's the topic of the Rec Commission's article?
It's establishing their fund, their recreation fund as a revolving fund or an enterprise fund.
I think it's, the purpose of this, I'm positive, just from my town advisory, we talked about this, right now, as a recreation fund, they have to spend all but $10,000 every year. By switching it to one of these, they could raise money over time for a larger project, so then they don't have to continue to spend that money each year.
Spend it down to $10,000.
Right, exactly. So if they wanted to do a larger project, this allows them time to accumulate money.
And is this town, is this town money, or this is other money?
Recreation money.
It's the money they raise through their recreation programs.
Okay. Hey, David, so you've got this scheduled, but I don't see the town meeting on it, I don't see any of the town meeting related dates on it.
It's just the same calendar.
Well, we should have them on the calendar. We've got the annual town meeting stuff, but we don't have the special town meeting. We should have those dates on here.
Yeah, we have the opening of the warrant on 11/29, but yeah, you're, closing of the warrant is on as well. Yeah, we should have the December 11th meeting listed. Terrific. Town administrator report?
I don't have anything. Thanks.
Any selectmen reports?
I have one thing to report. The planning board, along with Andrew Kinsigley, are having a, not a public hearing, but a public discussion on next Thursday, October 25th, at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall, for them to make a public presentation about the 41 North Main Street property and get feedback from the public.
And I'm sorry, what time is that?
7:00 PM, Thursday, October 25th.
Any other?
Yeah, but I'm putting that in my calendar.
Selectmen reports, yeah, that's... Terrific. The board will now consider entering into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Rens 3, to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town and the chair so declares. That would be the consideration of a procurement action, RE, the library expansion project involving design techniques, OPM contract, and five-stars performance bond. I do so declare that it'll have, it... I do so declare that it'll have, it may have a detrimental effect on our litigating position. The board will return to open session. I need a second and a roll call vote.
Second.
The motion is seconded by selectman Morrell.
Could I run discussion? I think you said something about an executive session for a procurement matter. It's actually an executive session to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation. Just want to make sure you read the right thing. Because procurement isn't a subject matter of executive session. So this is the executive section here, just this.
This language.
Is the open session language.
Is the open session language, so.
So this is the executive session.
Right.
So I wonder if you withdraw that motion, and let me just make a different motion.
Yeah, I'm happy to.
So I move to go into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, 3, to discuss strategy with respect to potential litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town and the chair so declares, relating to the library construction project.
Second. And the library, and the board will return to open session as part of your.
Yes.
Motion.
Thank you, yes.
Need a second and a roll call?
Second.
Having a second, roll call vote, Mr. Durensis.
Aye.
Mr. Morrell?
Aye.
Mr. Giama?
Aye.
Mr. Yon?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Having passed by a vote of four ayes and one yes. But having passed by a vote of five to zero at 7:32 PM, the open session is closed, and we are now in executive session. To return to open session after the end of the executive session. Terrific, returning to open session, select board's meeting on October 18th, 2018, asked the town administrator to discuss the authorizing town council to send a letter to Travelers Casualty and Surety Company to ask them as performance bond stewardess to fulfill their obligations to the town under the performance bond. David? Have we?
A recommendation?
Yeah, I think we did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that we should call the performance bond for, I recommend calling it as soon as possible and providing notification with the town council's advice on the wording of the letter.
And you spoke with town council, and that is town council's recommendation to the board?
Yes, I understand that the library trustees and the committee had made that request.
Yes.
The library trustees did vote unanimously to do this as well.
Yeah.
A discussion up here?
I think there should be an explanation to the voters who are watching here today. What does all this mean? So what is this business about a bond and calling it, and why are we doing this? Speak in a paragraph.
I'm not prepared to school people on what a performance bond, but I'm sure council has reviewed the whole bond.
Tom, could you give us a summary of what this action, and if you could do it at the mic, that'd be great.
Tom McInnany from KP Law, town council. A performance bond is a surety arrangement between the town, the contractor and the surety. It's not insurance, it's somewhat similar to insurance, and basically what the bond does is it guarantees the performance of the contractor on the project here. As you know, there have been significant problems with respect to the library construction project related to Five Stars performance, and as well as other issues, but primarily lately has been, the project has been delayed significantly as a result of Five Stars failure to properly staff the job and other construction-related defects. This process basically is the first step in providing notice to the surety to fulfill their obligations to the town, which is essentially to guarantee the performance of the project. So that's, in a nutshell, what a performance bond does.
And how does it help the project?
So the surety would be, the first step is, the way this bond in particular works is that the town sends out a notice that it's considering declaring a contract to default on the project, and the surety is requested to have a meeting with the town within 10 days under the terms of the bond. The surety at that point would be unnoticed that, obviously, there are performance issues, and the surety has a number of different options that it can take in order to help, either help the contractor fulfill its obligations by providing funding or other support to the contractor to enable it to complete the job, or in the event that the town were to terminate the contract, then we would be requesting at that point that the surety step in and either hire a new contractor, provide funding, or whatever steps that the surety ultimately deems is appropriate in order to fulfill its obligations. But by notifying the surety, it essentially provides, hopefully will provide the contractor with additional support in order to enable it to complete the project. If not, then the expectation would be that the surety would step in and take over.
And the amount of the performance bond is $6.8 million?
That's correct. It's the, the penal sum of the bond is the original contract price.
So would it be fair to summarize what you just said as being that the board is taking a vote that will get the project moving towards completion?
Certainly is the expectation and the hope by doing that, yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion up here? I would move that we authorize town council to send it a letter to Travelers Casualty and Surety Company of America. Precise language here. Calling upon travelers as the performance bond stewardess to fulfill its obligations to the town of Sherburn under the performance bond.
Second.
Any amendments or discussions? All in favor? And.
Abstained, I abstained.
So 401 vote.
Is there another motion?
Like to adjourn me?
I think we're, I think we're done.
I'll move to adjourn.
All right, second, all in favor? Thank you.